All right. Now, I would like to call this meeting to order, please. Would everyone's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge...
A pledge, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
One second, sorry. Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Here.
Councilmember Litzo?
Here.
Councilmember McLean is absent. Councilmember Reinaker?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Here.
Thank you. We have no introductions, recognitions, or presentations tonight, so we're going to move straight to public comments.
The public... Sorry, Mayor. The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the City Council to listen to comments from citizens. It is not a question and answer session, and the City Council will not respond to comments or answer questions during this period. The mayor may refer any matter brought up to the City Council to the chief administrative officer or city clerk if action is needed.
Do we have any public comments this evening, David?
Mayor and council, we have a few requests for comment this evening. The first is Fonda Fentroy Richards.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Fonda, if you didn't know me. I don't know how anybody didn't, but, okay. I'm going to start off with, the history of Kirkwood has long been an interesting subject in conversation between old timers and for a few new ones. Young ears, but most of it is about a town. I am a fourth-generation Kirkwoodian, proud Kirkwoodian. What's coming up at the end of this month is the start of Black History Month. We are celebrating it with three events this year. The first is going to be held down at K-Pac, and that is, we are going to have Melina Smith, and she will be singing. We have the Tillman Pepper Steppers, the Community Gospel Choir, and the Kirkwood High School Vocal Jazz Ensemble. And of course, our mayor will be there as an emcee for us. We are excited about that. It is a fundraiser that will go back into supporting Black History in Kirkwood. The next event will be on February 8th, and it will be at a mortuary. It will be down at Oak Hill, and we will have Dr. Jeff Smith, who will talk about the history or the history behind black cemeteries, especially Father Dixon, which is our highlight cemetery this year. And then we will have presiding elder Elmo Low, who will talk about the relevance of black churches. And then, we will have the lovely Mrs. Alma Reed. She will be talking about being the first African-American teacher in an all-white school here in Kirkwood. She is 88 years, soon to be 89, and we are excited about that event, so we all... So, sign up for that, please. Then, on the 22nd, the motorcade is back. We will take you around Kirkwood to some of the historical spots. I talked about those seven black churches. I have been working with all seven churches to get information on them. Hopefully, the ministers will be over at the church to talk about it, but we have boards on all the churches. How many of you know how many black churches there are in Kirkwood? Seven. How many of you know that Unity Baptist Church? Do you know where it's at? Down there on Taylor, right across from the post office, by the post office, behind K-Pac. It used to be called Second Church, but we'll tell you about the history later. But Unity Baptist Church, if you go to MSD's map, it's referred to as the colored church. We've made some strides here, and then again, we've stepped back a few. But, we will be talking about all seven churches. You will tour, you will come back to Mud's Grove, where we hope those ministers will be. And we also will have a segment where we will talk about Find a Grave. I don't know about you, but I have a lot of relatives I haven't been able to find at Quinnett and Father Dixon, and some other cemeteries around town. So, someone will be there to work with you to help you find your lost ones. We will also have the Spears family. The Spears family is the oldest black family in Meacham Park. They have been here since 1892. They were the originals. As a matter of fact, if any of you... I know everybody's had this book. There is an article about Mother of Meacham Park residents preparing meals for General Grant. So, the Spears family will be the highlighted family this year. We will also talk about some of the things that happened in the Kirkwood schools. So, we hope that you all will come out and support us. We're excited about it, and thank you for this opportunity to talk to you.
Fonda, how would someone get tickets for the concert on the 31st of January?
Well, you can go down to K-Pac and get tickets, or you can go to MetroTix and order tickets that way, so.
And there's more information about this through the Kirkwood Historical Society?
Yes, and I also have some flyers if you'd like me to hand... I'll leave them up there, and you can see where you can sign up. I will tell you, the bus tour last year filled up, so, you know, the information for the bus tour is right below here, so please, sign up now. There are five tours. And of course, Wallace Ward will be leading the troops again.
You can give those to David, Fonda. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got my tickets Tuesday easy over at K-Pac to get them.
I would recommend go to K-Pac. It's cheaper going through them than MetroTix.
$3.
Dollars.
And they actually will give you a real ticket.
So, my name is Don Ficken. I live at 13024 Bear Crossing Court, and I spoke to you last time about the issue of lighting. You might recall that I founded Dark Sky Missouri a few years ago. And, one of the things... I'd just like to do a real quick demo. One of the things that I have learned as I've done talks with different people is that there's a misunderstanding between Kelvin and what's called CCT, which is the color-coordinated temperature. So, if I could get my fat fingers to work here correctly... So, this is a very cheap 40-watt bulb. Speaking of terminology, 40 watts is not how they think about these things these days. But this little remote allows me to turn this bulb on and actually go from 1,700 Kelvin all the way up to 6,000 Kelvin. Kind of a cool way to demonstrate this. And what you're going to find is I do this, it's going to appear brighter to you, but it's actually not brighter in terms of real lumens output, okay? I could take it back down to 1,700 Kelvin, and I can actually make it brighter, meaning it's the same 1,700 Kelvin, but it's a lot brighter to our eyes. So, let me see if I can do this for us.
Don?
Yes.
Oh, he's working yours.
Ah! I love it.
We're going to turn...
So, you guys get up close personal here. So, this is actually 1,700 Kelvin. This is so cool. This is like stereo, right? So, this is 1,700 Kelvin, okay? And then I can take it up to 2,700 Kelvin, okay? Now, you're thinking this is brighter, but actually, when I measure this with a tool, it's not brighter. It's the same lumens, the same real output, okay? Now, I could take this up to 4,500, and then I could take this up to 6,000. You see the blue? So, I'm going from 17, 27, 45, and 6,000.
Or 6,000.
So, what's happening now is that we're thinking this is actually brighter, and it will give us a little bit of a perception it is, but it's really just the way it's tricking our eyes. Now, I'm going to take it back down to 1,700, and I'm actually going to make it brighter. That's actually brighter, okay? It's the same 1,700 Kelvins if I were to measure this with the device, but it's actually brighter. So, my point is this, is that you can take the color temperature up and make it look brighter, which will be the blue color, which is not good for your health, it's not good for nature, or you can simply make it brighter if you actually have to have it brighter, okay? So, I would just like to have you understand the difference between the two, because it is something that I was actually surprised when I started measuring this. It's like, I can't believe this is the same Kelvin, and it's brighter, and then its color temperatures are actually the same lumen. So, it's something to think about as you're thinking about the lighting, and so, that's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Don.
I love the stereo effect, by the way.
That is funny with that return.
Hello again.
Hi.
I'm glad Don came first. I'm glad he did the demonstration with the mayor, the stereo demonstration. And Don was really making a very important point. A lot of people misunderstand the difference between the intensity of light and the color of light. And I think probably you all understand this by now, but a lot of people get confused with that. The intensity, the brightness, is measured in lumens, and the color of the light is measured in Kelvin temperature, degrees of Kelvin temperature. And I wanted to read you something that I found the other day when I was looking at the Facebook page for Safer Streets for Kirkwood. Somebody posted this, and it was anonymous, so I don't know if it was Mr. Carmody or somebody else. But, the person wrote, "The city of Kirkwood is considering dimming the requirements for local street lighting to below 3,000 Kelvin. Recent pedestrian crashes in underlit areas highlight the dangers of inadequate lighting and lack of sidewalks. Advocates for reduced lighting have overlooked these incidents and the proven safety benefits of adequate lighting. These examples underscore the potential liability for the city if lighting falls below 3,000 Kelvin, compromising pedestrian safety." Well, this is just craziness. And really, Mr. Carmody and his members of this group would really benefit if they were to go to a good lighting seminar and learn the difference between the lighting brightness and the lighting color. To use words like, "The city of Kirkwood is considering dimming the requirements for street lighting," advocates for reduced lighting, a potential liability for the city. This is just craziness. I want to say proudly that I grew up in the USA, and I never owned an automobile until I was 42 years old. So, you know, I'm very sympathetic to Mr. Carmody's group. I've been a pedestrian, I've been a cyclist, I've made great use of public transit trains and buses. Again, I didn't own a car until much too old. So, you know, I salute them for what they're trying to do. They're trying to ensure the safety of people who don't use cars, people who cycle and walk and so forth, and bravo. You know, I'm glad there are groups like theirs, but they need to get their facts straight. And I think it's important to look at the trend lines in this country when it comes to the safety of pedestrians and cyclists. For many years, really for the last half-century, the fatality rates for pedestrians and cyclists was pretty low and pretty constant. And that all began to change within the last decade, and it was at the same time that municipalities began to switch from sodium-vapor street lighting and outdoor lighting to LED lighting.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you very much. Okay.
Yeah, council?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I kind of thought that. Now, the motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, great. We'll move to unfinished business, Bill 11066A.
Yes, Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the provisions of the Municipal Code, Chapter 25, zoning and subdivision for outdoor lighting requirements in Section
Do I have a motion second?
Wait. This is a roll... This is unfinished business, so this is going to be a roll call.
Oh, okay.
So, you just open it for discussion?
Open it for discussion.
And then we do roll call when we do the vote.
Open for discussion. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So, a swan song, at least, on this topic of regulating Kelvin for private development in Kirkwood excluding single-family residents. So, regarding this amended bill, I think it's important to remind ourselves of some history about it. Last October, P&amp;Z Commission was initially asked to review a proposed restriction of outdoor lighting for all...
No, I think you're on the wrong bill. We're on Bill 11064?
No, Mayor.
166.
I'm sorry, 16...
We're on 66A.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. So, the proposed bill seeks to restrict outdoor lighting, Kelvin rating of outdoor lighting for all new private development except single-family residences to 27,000 Kelvin or less. That proposal at the P&amp;Z Commission did not pass, so the commission considered other Kelvin ratings. They looked at 3,000 Kelvin. That restriction failed to pass, so then the commission ultimately approved restricting Kelvin rating to 4,000 Kelvin, and also asking business owners, petitioners to consider lower Kelvin ratings. So, this applies to all new outdoor lighting for businesses in our downtown area, our light industrial area, on private athletic fields, car dealerships, et cetera. As some of the citizens who spoke alluded to, Kelvin describes the color of the light produced by various light fixtures. 2,700 Kelvin produces an orangish-yellow light. 4,000 Kelvin produces a neutral-white light that's slightly yellow. Many businesses in Kirkwood already use 4,000 Kelvin luminaires to light their parking lots, for example. The existing light fixtures would be grandfathered. This only applies to new light fixtures. If there are cases where there's heightened concerns about personal safety and security or special uses for nighttime illumination, businesses are currently allowed to install lighting that is higher than 2,700, above 5,000 K even for a couple of new businesses. We've heard concerns about glare from some citizens, the adverse health effects of overexposure to blue light, as well as the effects of nighttime lighting on wildlife and trees. The primary sources of light glare include natural sunlight, which we can't really regulate, fluorescent lights, smartphones, computer screens, and television screens, as well as poorly-designed or incorrectly-installed outdoor light fixtures. This bill only pertains to outdoor lighting. All those other smartphones, computer screens, that's up to people to, you know, be aware of on their own. I've learned in researching this topic that glare can be minimized by selecting luminaires or the light bulbs, if you will, that are designed with materials and lens housing designs that minimize glare. LEDs must be installed at proper heights, and the angle of light dispersal... Proper angle of light dispersal is key to reducing glare. Generally, luminaires with lower color temperatures, such as 2,700, create less glare, but the resulting visibility is not as good as that of luminaires with a higher Kelvin rating at night. The poorer visibility can be improved by increasing the luminaire rating to make it actually brighter. Luminesces with higher color temperatures, such as 4,000 K or higher, may produce more glare, but generally, they result in better visibility and contrast, which makes objects more discernible than the 2,700 Kelvin lights do. As a common problem for all LED lights, regardless of the Kelvin rating, it's common for the lumen rating or the brightness of the light to depreciate over the time of operation. This so-called lumen depreciation typically amounts to as much as 30% over their useful life. It's caused by the heat produced by the lights themselves at the junction boxes, high ambient operating temperatures. So, the older the LEDs, the dimmer they become, by as much as 70%. If they're not properly monitored, they will not produce the desired amount of illumination and must be, you know, replacement. If they're not replaced in a timely fashion, then you eventually have dimmer inadequate light. Basically, everything I've read in the literature about this, I do not agree that the city should restrict all outdoor lighting of private development to 2,700 Kelvin. This matter involves so many variables as to specific uses, activities, and zoning districts. Also, whether the business or the facility is located downtown, or the light industrial area, or in a neighborhood business district, or on Manchester Road, there's too many different variables to consider. Lighting requirements and restrictions are typically very site-specific, and I believe are best handled by the property owners and their consultants as they design their lighting system to comply with our existing lighting code so that it best meets their individual needs and supports the safety and security of their patrons and staff, while also helping to ensure their economic success. Thank you.
I will do a little show and tell as well. I support the mayor in this, a commander for challenging us to learn more about Kelvins, the color, and the lumens, and the difference. I brought a light bulb, not necessarily to do show and tell today, but technology is kind of amazing. On this one light bulb that my husband, who's now gotten fascinated by this, got at Costco's, and you could individually go from 2,700, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000, and 6,000. We put this in a lamp in our house, turned out the lights, and went through it, and it was rather remarkable to see the color change and recognize that we could still see even when it was at the 2,700. I have some visual challenges, and I recognize that I could still, based on this light bulb, and go to 2,700, could see very well. This was a 800 lumen, I think converts kind of to a 60 watt. But then we also have one that's a 1,600, and at 2,700, 1,600 lumen comparable to around 100 watt. Really, you lose the yellow hue, but the visibility is outstanding. So, as we all kind of navigate this new world and our concern about blue light and the impact, because we're kind of bombarded with blue light everywhere, I challenge you to go to Costco's and pick up a pack of these. And to some of Nancy's point, I do think that over time, you may lose some, you know, some whatever that you're looking for, so we just change them out a little bit more. So, I love this. I loved having the opportunity to learn it. I think it's a step forward, and I challenge us to continue to keep this, for a variety of reasons, out in our sphere.
Yeah, I have a couple of things to add, Mayor. I think the confusion still is people aren't taking the time to understand the difference in Kelvins and lumens. Kelvins has nothing to do with brightness. That's lumen, so we're just asking people to change the... To lower the Kelvins. And I talked to a couple developers who develop property in Kirkwood, and they say they've been using 2,700 for years, that that's what their customers prefer. Then I asked somebody, you know, the sodium vapor lights, we're all familiar with the streetlights all over South St. that we've all had to come home when the lights came on? Those are 2,200 Kelvin. So, they, for years, those were adequate lighting. We're even going above that, different color, and I can't understand any objection to this. I'm going to support this.
Just one addition. I think some of the federal highway guidelines, we've come to learn that, you know, they recommend 3,000, but that's because at the time, they were doing their early-on research. 2,700, some of the lowers, were not widely available. So, there's not research out there that says, "Don't go to 2,700." You know, they recommend, you know, that 3,000, but that's because, again, when you look at research, you know, there's sometimes they don't finish it all out. So, you know, I haven't seen anything that says, "Don't go to 2,700." Again, I think as we become more savvy with this, and I think we're going to find that we can do okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzo?
No.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
No.
Okay, Bill 11066A passes. We move to... Why am I so... Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring back Bill 11064 to the floor for reconsideration.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, discussion on the motion to reconsider? On the motion to reconsider? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. I'm going to pass it out right now. We've had to wait to get... So, we got approval on the motion to reconsider. I will pass out a copy of Bill 11064. Then, Mr. Hawes will read the title. So, let me get copies for everybody.
No, no.
Okay, we got plenty to come down.
Back on the floor.
So, this is Bill 11064. This is an ordinance amending the provisions of the Municipal Code, Chapter 25, zoning and subdivision for sidewalk requirements, not part of a subdivision in Section 2569A
Thank you. Is there any...
No, it's a second reading, so we'll open it up for discussion.
Discussion on this?
Discussion. That, Councilmember Schaefer. Councilmember Schaefer?
I'd like to make... I'd like to make a motion to continue this Bill 11064 to the February 6, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Need discussion on the motion to continue? What's the...
We don't have full council here, and so that's why I want to bring it back up at the next meeting.
That's why we're continuing it?
Correct.
Well, it was already settled.
No, I...
I understand you're reopening it, but I'm just...
That's correct. That's what I'm doing.
Motion for reconsideration has already passed, so now it's a motion to continue it to the next meeting. That's on the floor right now.
Do you continue the bill, or all opposed?
Yeah, okay. No further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right.
February.
Bill was continued to February 6. We will now move to new business, Resolution 3, 2025.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution authorizing and directing the submittal of a surface transportation program application to East-West Gateway Council of Governments for federal funds for improvements to Argonne Drive from Taylor Avenue to Guyer Road.
Thank you. Do I have a motion in second to accept Resolution 3, 2025, as read?
Motion, second.
Very good. Thank you. Discussion.
A question, and Chris probably... Is that this is for a concept plan? Is it, if we get awarded this grant, then there'll be additional potential changes, things that might not be in there, might be in there, other kinds of things? So, it's just getting us in the first step of coming up to the opportunity to start really looking at it.
Correct.
So, this is to submit a grant to do preliminary engineering right-of-way and construction for this. The concept that's out there can be changed to certain extents. I mean, the main project limits, the main portions of the project would stay the same, but if we wanted to add or delete small things, we can.
In a timeline on these, as we... The process, and then when we're going to get... If we get approved, the start of it, any kind of real sense of a timeline that...
Yeah, so the timeline is that we... The application is due on February 7th. We would get notification of award in August of this year, so it takes that long for us... For East-West Gateway to review the applications, and their board to get approval of that. And then, typically, federal projects are a three-year project, where you have engineering design right-of-way, and then construction. So, construction of this is anticipated sometime in 2029.
Aye, great. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. And our team has been very successful with these grants, so... Any other discussion?
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jekstedic?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Resolution passes. We now move into, council reports, please.
I have one there.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Schaefer.
Library Board liaison, just some good, more good news coming from the library. They were awarded two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars last year in grants for the library. So they're out looking for money like Chris does, so they're doing the same thing. So I just congratulate them on getting the grants.
Anybody else? Yes.
I went to the kickoff meeting for the Green Tree Festival. You know, every time those people get together, amazes me, there's, it's a room full of people, all volunteers, they meet every month. And this year, they're gonna have carnival rides. It's a big new thing, so.
Very fun.
Everybody's excited about carnival rides.
Yeah, I bet.
I'm not, but. Grandkids, it will be.
Yeah, yeah. Great.
Oh, yeah.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? City Administrator report, please.
Yes, the city received an application for temporary outdoor promotional variance from the Alpine Shop, four forty North Kirkwood Road, to hold their annual spring showcase boat and bike swap sale from March twenty-eighth, from ten AM to seven PM, March twenty-ninth, from ten AM to seven PM, and March thirtieth, from eleven AM to six PM. And this request would require a city council approval by voice vote.
Thank you. Do I have a motion as second to approve that?
Motion.
Okay, are there any questions or concerns? Okay. All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
O's name?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, city attorney report? Okay, great. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, I have one thing to report. I have the report of the January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The following action was taken after a presentation by staff on a zoning map amendment for a portion of one one two zero Earl Avenue from R four, single-family residential to B three, highway commercial. A subcommittee was appointed. The subcommittee will meet at City Hall in the lower-level conference room on Wednesday, January twenty-second, at eleven AM. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? No? Okay, seeing no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. The next regular scheduled meeting will be on Thursday, February sixth. Thank you.